Call us meeting to order please rise with pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, consider it a public privilege serious. One nation, without borders, without crime.
Roll call please.
It's four, I, Mrs. Thompson.
Yep.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Bittner.
Here.
Mr. Shaboo.
Here.
Mr. Lunder.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here. They call the order of the public hearing on ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash O dash twenty-seven. In ordinance amending codified ordinances twelve forty point zero two, twelve fifty-eight point zero two, and creating new section twelve fifty-eight point zero two one in order to regulate small box discount stores in the city. Law director or the administrative director or whoever from the administration provide a brief explanation of the ordinance.
There is a so many ordinance. By the end of the hearing. There was quite a bit of discussion last year about what we need an addition to small box. That sort of business for the city. We all have seen discussion. Council decided to approve the new study. That's pretty well. It's good. I relished him with the man knew. It's limited in business. To the majority.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the audience on the ordinance? There are none. We're here now for persons who wish to speak in favor of the ordinance. If you'd like to speak, if you have the ordinance, please come to the lecture and state your name and address for the record. There are none. We will now hear for persons who wish to speak against the ordinance. There are none. Members of council wish to speak for the ordinance. Okay, well, the hearing is closed at seven oh two P M. We'll move on now. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting of council, March seventh, twenty twenty-three. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? There are none. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Bittner. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson saying, Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Bittner.
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder. Mr. Johnson.
Aye. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of council from March fourteenth. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? There are none. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
The motion for teeth of the night.
March fourteen means current. So motion made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Bittner. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Bittner. Mr. Shaboo.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder.
Good.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye. Correspondence. Clerk, is there any correspondence this evening?
I have no correspondence.
Is any member of council have correspondence today? There are none. We move on to administrative department head reports. Mayor and safety director, Mr. Eva, good evening.
Good evening, just in the house of the public here this evening. Just want to let everybody know that CCA sent a question to A C. It will be here this Friday, March thirty-first, three to seven P M. And the A C asked question. Who's this? Also there, I know members of council have had questions as opposed to the third. Patients. Letter of. In the other. Home. And Chief Chancellor in the first minutes. I just wanted to read the letter of the J A. Chief Chancellor. My role was the A C staff. Have four personnel. Need to be sent. The original. Be advised. He put in the addition to the fire. Which would allow us to. Why is this important? If the lives or personnel were saved. Off the form of the D S B. Early time. Supporting the connection with the kitchen. And got with the full portion. The part of the new four players. And nothing to do with any interior. As such a fire. There is completely immediate threat to the loss of one. Simply put. Sample. He cannot begin with interior of the game. For the structure point. So forty-five percent. And probably the things that they can see. This way is not a problem. If they use. Good fight. It also allows. To buy more efficient services for residents. In twenty twenty-two, there were eighty-one departments. There were four. For backup rescue. That was handled by. Because we have four personnel to do. These backup rescue. Were answered immediately. And the resident. Wouldn't have to eat thirty-one personnel. Or a region A squad. If we didn't have four personnel to do. Those eighty-one calls. They would have been the part of the people. We averaged two personnel responding three times. Which means that added four personnel to do. Save the city eleven thousand system enough. Next year. This brings us to why we need. The person. In twenty twenty-two. There are two thousand three hundred seventeen unpublished ships. We've also lost two personnel. And moved over two thousand claims each next year. The average. Years. If you look across state and state. Every word. That he lies. Person. This number. The other. Then. Ask them. Her things within the community. And then the senior member who played the future. Replacing. Our citizens who are perfectly responsible. We need to replace them. We can then work to come on. I think this is a separate. I'm using. We have talked many times. Chiefs have been. And have expressed. The need. Yet. We're on the label. Any other stadium. There. We have had. Dispatch. Position. These two months. Serpents. Serpent. They think they find. And. Giving us free open. I, I still think. That. He did add that word. To some time and. As I said in my email. We would look at that. As we go. If, if we thought appropriations were not prepared, we do that. Then. I would not do that. But I would. By adding that word. At the end of this. Person.
Administrative director, Mr. Ness, good evening.
Looking on the. And serving as partners on the A C. That's it, can you learn? That's not.
Thank you. Law director, Mr. Lyons, good evening.
Good evening. I have noted.
Okay, then we will move on to questions to administration and department heads, and I'll start with the questions. So, Mr. Mayor, if you are. Am able to adding a, the third firefighter later in the year, then I would assume that you would be amiable to amending the budget later in the year to add that person rather than having it in the budget now. It would still allow you to hire that third firefighter if we see the appropriations as being adequate. At that time. Here's, here's my concern is. We. When you pass the ordinance tonight, whether or not you pass. We turn that over to the county. The county says. This is what we will hold you to. For twenty twenty-three. No more, no less. I would rather have more than less. And as I said, if we decide in September that. Either way we go. It would go through all the council first. I'm not speaking to anybody in here. And I don't know why that would even be a concern. And how would it go through council? We don't make an approval while hiring new people into the, into the departments. I, I would make sure it goes as a resolution to the council. Any other questions for the administration?
So if we. Put this into the allocation for that line item for the fire department and it doesn't work out, those funds could be moved to another department later on. It's just accounting for those funds, is that?
Correct.
As I.
Right, right. So let's say we don't use those funds. Our carryover then for the year. Would be higher than we thought. Which isn't a bad thing.
Thank you.
I was going to bring this up. Until we actually discuss the, the ordinance, but I'll bring it up now. I have concerns with this, and I believe I was verbal with this at the last council meeting about the timing to do these, this hiring of additional firefighters. Is bad considering we're going to go back to voters and ask them to approve those charter amendments. In default, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, with that being said, I, I see a lot of things going on in, within the fire department. One is I see that this could create a problem because in section fourteen oh nine of the full-time contract states that all the part-time firefighters must be laid off before any full-timer laid off. Well, if these charter amendments don't pass, let's say the fire doesn't pass for whatever reason. Then what are you going to do then? The part-timers will all have to be laid off before you can lay off any one of the full-timers. By contract. So I, what I'm suggesting is replacing Lieutenant Condi's position. This year. And leave the rest be. Until next year. That way you can at least keep the staffing the way it was set. And then next year in twenty twenty-four, if it looks like, yes, the fire department needs these people, then hire the two of them. So get past the charter amendment renewals.
The charter levies will go on the ballot this year. The charter levies do not expire until next year.
Okay.
If they do not pass this year. Then they'll go on the ballot next year.
If council approves it.
That's right.
Yeah.
Unless. I know, I don't know something that maybe you know about changing those levies.
I. Don't know anything specific.
Okay.
But I do know that there's some people that are frustrated with the fire department. That I do know.
Were those some people?
I'm not going to mention names.
Okay.
I'm not going to mention any. And, and the other thing that comes up to mind is in reviewing the, the fire department reports. In last July twenty-two. The fire department report stated that all the full-time firefighters had gone to fire officer class. So I suspect that there's a motion of what to make those gentlemen officers within the fire department. Okay, that's going to increase the cost of the fire department at that point of operating. Additional cost. These guys aren't going to think the lieutenant's badge without an increase in pay. That's going to be by contract. Correct. So that increases the money it's going to cost us to run the fire department.
You're assuming they're all going to do the tides.
Yep.
Why, why would you assume that?
Well, it's usually an A, B, and C show.
Okay.
And I've heard conversations have been had by someone in previous administration. That they want, no part-time. Officer should give a full-time firefighter orders. No part-time employee should ever give a full-timer an order. Well, we ran okay with that way for a long time. And with Chief Pacheco sitting down here in the audience, I've heard stories from some of his officers that he treats the full-timers more like officers than he does the officers. I don't know that to be true, and I'm not here to micromanage the chief's department. But is.
I think you're making a lot of assumptions here that maybe you shouldn't have been made.
Maybe I am.
Yes, you are.
But I could also be making predictions of things that could be coming true. And I, I don't want to see us put the city in a position where if the charter amendments don't pass for whatever it is, Mayor, then what are you going to do?
Okay, those charter amendments, last time they were on the ballot, what was the percentage of passing?
I don't remember.
All over seventy percent.
Fine. Is that a chance you're willing to take? I'm not.
Okay, well, that, that's, that's one out of seven.
That's right, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the administration? There are none. We'll move on to. Order committee commission reports, ordinance committee.
Ordinance met on the twentieth, President and myself, Paul Day, Mr. Gray. Called orders seven P M. Went over the right-of-way ordinance. Finished that up, sent it off to council, you'll see that on the legislation. We also met over the rental inspection legislation for that to come to its all this time. Future legislation that's coming up, can be parking on private property. Group is. Agreed to adopt what manner has in their ordinance. We ensure that eight oh nine.
Yes, thank you. Any other boards committees to be this time? None. We will move on to open to the public to speak. If you'd like to speak, please come to the lecture and state your name and address for the record. Again, this is a chance for you to speak to council. It is not a back and forth between us. There are none. We move on to legislation for council. We have been asked to amend the agenda to add twenty twenty-three dash R dash zero seven. You should all have a copy of that. I assume that we have a grant that we are trying to accept right now, and that's why we need to pass this tonight. Yes, there's. It's been a couple of years that we have to use the NOPEC money. And the plan is to use the NOPEC money, at least partially on the police department. Okay. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to add it?
So made.
Made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Bittner. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Bittner.
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye. It's been added to the agenda. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash zero seven, if you could please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash zero seven. A resolution authorizing the administrative director to perform all actions necessary to accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council NOPEC twenty twenty-three energized community grants funds.
Any questions on this?
Motion to suspend.
Seconded. Motion to suspend by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Morris. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Bittner.
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Motion for passage.
Seconded. Motion made by Mr. Lunder, seconded by Mr. Morris for passage. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Bittner.
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye. The ordinance is passed. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash zero eight, if you could please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash zero eight. A resolution ratifying the agreement with the part-time firefighters and authorizing the mayor and administrative director to execute a written agreement with the Menor on the Lake Part-Time Firefighters Association and declaring an emergency.
Are there any questions on this legislation?
This is a contract that you guys already settled on.
Yes, yes. Anything else? Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So made.
Seconded.
Made by Mr. Bittner, seconded by Mrs. Thompson. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Bittner.
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Motion for passage.
Seconded. Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Morris for passage. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Bittner.
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye. Resolution is passed. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash zero nine, if you could please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash zero nine. A resolution declaring the month of April twenty twenty-three Child Abuse Prevention Month in Menor on the Lake, Ohio.
Motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Morris. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Bittner.
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Motion for passage. Seconded.
Motion made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mrs. Thompson for passage. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Bittner.
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye. Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash O dash twenty-five has been assigned to the planning and zoning commission. So it will stay there. So they have met on it. Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash O dash twenty-seven, if you could please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash O dash twenty-seven, third reading. An ordinance amending codified ordinances for twelve forty point oh two, twelve fifty-eight point oh two, and creating a new section twelve fifty-eight point oh two one in order to regulate small box discount stores in the city.
Discussion.
Motion for passage.
Well, I'll bring up something.
Okay.
Um. I'm glad that we're going to regulate the small box discount stores and not allow them in business one district. My concern is with business two district, limiting it to only two stores. Overall in the entire city, not just in that district, but the entire city, so that if one of the existing ones closed. Another one couldn't come in and take its place. Now, I'm not a fan of dollar stores. I don't shop at them. But. I don't like the idea of limiting the number in the actual business two district. I think those plazas already exist. There's a limited number of things that can go into those plazas as they are. So I'm opposed to regulating the number in the city. But I'm greatly for not having them in business one at all.
So to that, we talked about that in great detail. We talked about putting a distance between them to whatever it may be. Once we eliminated from business two, then we just said, you know, one. Business one is only so big anyway. Two is the number. That's where it ended up with. So it was kind of, that was the discussion.
Well, I thought there was also a discussion about if one of those closed, then another one could take its place.
Good, because if you have the Dollar General.
That's true.
And you have a dollar store, then you have a vacancy there, and we're saying. Well, we're not going to allow anything to go in there unless it's not that.
What is? Isn't this business one over here?
No, business one is the west side of Andrews. Business two is the plazas.
Correct. So business one, the new dollar store that'll be here.
That one, if that closes, nothing, no new dollar store could go there.
Understand, but if either of these two did, they could technically, but this business one is not.
The limitation is two in the city.
Is it two in the city or to be said in business two?
It's two in the city.
Two in the city.
It's two in the city.
You're correct. They cannot. If it doesn't close, they can't go back at all. So we can all, I.
So what are you recommending? I'm recommending that we amend it to be a limit of two in business district two. None in one. Maximum of two and two.
No. I make a motion, we make that amendment.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mrs. Thompson to limit the number of dollar stores in business district two to two.
So removed from the city and put business.
Correct, yeah. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Bittner.
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye. Motion for passage.
So made.
Made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Shaboo. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Bittner.
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash O dash zero two, if you could please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash O dash zero two. amended third reading. An ordinance providing appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Menor on the Lake for the year twenty twenty-three. Repealing any ordinance prior year two and declaring an emergency.
Discussion. I'll start it off, because I've already stated. I'm perfectly okay with adding in one new firefighter and replacing one that's leaving. What I have a concern about is adding in a second new firefighter. You know, when we hire somebody to our city that is in one of our safety forces. It's kind of like giving birth. They're going to have that child for at least the next eighteen years or more, as long as they stay, and we're going to be paying for them for that entire time. I have concerns over whether our budget can afford that, you know, over the long term. You know, it's easy to go. We're starting to see nice carryovers again. We're starting to see, you know, we're having money again. Well, one of the promises we made when we put those levies on the ballot originally was if we did start seeing improvements, we'd reduce those levies. We weren't going to tax people more. So I have a concern over that. You know, I understand the need to hire full-time people because it's so hard to fill with part-timers. But I want to see our budget staying strong enough so that I feel confident that we can afford to hire that person and keep them. You know, it wasn't that long ago that we had to cut people out of our city. People left and we weren't going to replace them. We watched our carryover dwindle to nothing, and we had to pass those levies to stay afloat. You know, that hasn't been lost on me that we did that. I led the fight on, on doing those levies with Mr. Bittner. So I recall it very well. And we have to ask for those levies again. And there is no guarantee that they'll always pass. You know, it's kind of nice to say, oh, well, you know, we're going to put this on the ballot. They passed by like seventy percent last time. It may not happen next time. You know, when we have our Lake County Commissioners trying to raise our sales tax. And then they have to repeal that because there's an outburst of everybody going, what the heck are you doing? You know, let's take a step back. Let's take the baby steps of adding in one firefighter. You know, let's take a step back. Let's take the baby steps of adding in one firefighter. And then we can add another. But this jump of adding two right now doesn't seem logical to me. It's not a good idea, and I will not support it.
I I again would like to mirror your sentiments, but again, it it going back to why those charter amendments were passed. We did make a promise to the voters that if if first of all, those were done to stave off any more erosion of the service. And that did that. I view doing what they're proposing to do now is not staving off the erosion necessarily, but and I've also asked that the timing is be be approved. Wait till next year, and it's not going to hurt that bad. At least I don't think it will. Yes, the voters are going to look at this and go, oh, my gosh. This isn't one I agreed to in council, and the administration has let us down. So it is what it is. And yes, that is my opinion on it. Now, I do think things could be done in a better time.
Now, I will disagree that it isn't that hiring those new firefighters isn't going to help stabilize our department. I think it definitely will do that. I think those are good things that we need to be looking at. But I think we need to do them in steps, not as a giant leap.
Mr. President, I won't even say that it's not necessary. It very well might be, because I know every fire department across the nation is having trouble getting volunteer or part-time firefighters. It doesn't exist like it did when when Mr. Lunder and I were first on the department. Then that department's gone. I admit that. But timing for tax dollars is important.
Anyone else?
I speak up. Right now, all across our nation, we are having, not just us. I'm talking other cities, large cities, small cities, counties. Filling full-time and part-time positions, safety forces, police, fire. Nobody wants to do those jobs. I think we can attract a better we will attract more people by offering full-time positions with benefits than we will part-time positions. This gives our part-timers the opportunity to apply for those full-time positions and advance within the fire department. I see adding one firefighter and considering later this year, a second firefighter a bonus to our residents, because if I'm a resident and I hear that, hey, you know, we're fully staffed twenty-four seven, and if I'm having an emergency, your response time is going to be quicker because we don't have to recall firefighters or wait for somebody to come for a matter. No offense, if somebody's having a heart attack in my house, I want to know that they're coming to my house within two to three minutes, and I'm not waiting for them to come from three oh six or Civic Center Boulevard, or wherever it is they have to come from. Or fire firemen who don't live within the city, however long it's going to take them to get in their car and drive over here to save somebody's life.
And I mean, I would like to mirror up that too and say that, you know, even what the mayor said, even if we just keep the line item there for the state or for the the county records that is there, if we use it for that firefighter for this year, or if we need it and pull it, we can put it to another line item and revisit that second one next year. But I think having those monies on that line item is very important right now as a backup, as a just in case that we can do it, and it is possible within our means.
Johnson.
Yes.
I want to make a comment about the levies. Uh, what I want to say is, is that if the levies don't, well, I want to put it this way. The levies, the people are used to paying that money now in taxes. If the levies fail, I have never seen my taxes ever go down when a when a levy leave, when we lose a levy anywhere in a county. Our taxes won't go down. So the people are used to paying these taxes now. And I feel that the levies will pass if they're presented the right way.
Anyone else?
Do you remember how much that was per hundred thousand? I think that's the example that was used.
Yeah, yeah, we did a hundred thousand, and I'm not sure. But the letter that we sent to the residents and we all signed it. A pledge that fire or charter fire levy would go for fire department personnel and equipment. The police charter levy would go for the police department personnel and equipment specifically.
In the road program.
And the road is kind of a, you know, asphalt and concrete, right?
Good. Anything else? Any motions? So on third reading.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Moore, seconded by Mrs. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
No.
Mr. Bitner.
Aye.
Mr. Chaboo.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
No. Okay. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash O dash zero three, if you could please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash O dash zero three, third reading. An ordinance providing for the compensation of elected elected and appointed salaried and hourly employees of the city of Menorah Lake, repealing any and all other ordinances and parts thereof which may be inconsistent herewith or which may be redundant here too and declaring an emergency.
Any discussion?
Motion for passage.
Motion made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Lunder for passage. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Bitner.
Aye.
Mr. Chaboo.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash O dash zero six, if you please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash O dash zero six. An ordinance amending chapter fourteen sixty-two, rental inspections of the codified ordinances.
Any discussion on this?
I I have a couple provisions, if possible. The the second sentence where it starts as where it's council. Uh, it reads conducted inspections of the exterior. Uh, we have two things in there. It says of rental units, so we can lose one of those. It says exterior of rental or rental units.
Yeah. I see.
That's on in fourteen sixty-two point oh one purpose. It reads the O C A National Property Maintenance Code. We follow the International Property Maintenance Code or I P M C. In that same paragraph about halfway down. Uh, it is, it says occupants of the dwellings with respect to sanitation. I I would lose, uh, where it says repair and maintenance, because it uh, it kind of repeats itself. But after respect to sanitation, I would recommend it says operations, repairs, and maintenance. And then in fourteen sixty-two point oh two A, it also references the O C A, if that can be changed to I P M C.
Yeah, I'm going to refer this ordinance back to the ordinance committee to make the corrections and any thing else to review on that before it comes back to council.
They should not continue or?
You can continue with him afterwards.
Okay.
On a separate, we're just going to give him the whole list.
Oh.
Clearly wasn't ready for prime time yet. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash O dash zero seven, if you please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash O dash zero seven. An ordinance creating new ordinance ten twenty-two point twelve, local tree lawn regulation not involving utilities and or telecommunication devices.
Any discussion on this?
Yes.
Okay, I will refer this back to the ordinance committee as well, and you can collect those with him there too.
Well, the title, like, orders is still around, just, you know. That's, that's mine. We, I I will tell you, we met as a staff yesterday afternoon, okay? And what I when when we look at these things, you guys make the laws, we have to enforce the law. So just that's what we're coming. All right.
Any old business tonight? Any new business tonight? Hey, we will go to the open to the public to speak. This is again your opportunity on the lecture. State your name and address for the record. You have anything to say to council. This is your opportunity.
City of Mr. Gray, some five, some four, dollar, you're right. So you guys approved current appropriations, and I still understand how um charter amendments were affected with the rating that were set, that they went changed or backed. There's no increase for the road, but there is increase for the charter, fire, and the police. Just don't understand. The current, the current rate, one point one, one point three, or whatever, should be changed up steps. I still don't see that. And then since we brought up earlier tonight, carryovers. You know, we have four years of budget on our website. Three things that I honed in on. Two thousand eighteen general fund, two point six million, general net, hundred thirty thousand. Net funds, a hundred seventy-six thousand. Us as constituents, and I look at, you're trying to pass a budget. Two thousand eighteen was two point six million, two thousand nineteen was two point four million, two thousand twenty is two point four, two thousand twenty-one was two point two million. You had a negative general net that year for a hundred and six. Now, I have called the state auditor to find out what's going on twenty twenty-two, since we had a lag of October through now of finances with uh, non-published air total and and not publicly reassessed it, though, two point six million air added up versus two point nine, which you're showing on the last two months ago appropriation sheet. There's not been a new publication for public to see. So again, two thousand nineteen, a net dollar amount, one point nine million. Two thousand twenty, four hundred twenty million. Two thousand twenty-one, seven hundred forty-six thousand. So as a resident, you brought up to not get a carryover. What is our carryover? We are applying for a NOPEC grant, and best of my knowledge, based on the appropriations, we are going to have still in hold in almost a half million in uh not cares act, but our but I still like to know where last year, where we spent eighty-nine thousand collectively. Yeah, there was some cares at the art bar. Eighty-five thousand was spent last year. That's missing from appropriations from last year. You know, we don't transparency-wise, judicial reports did not give it. And uh, tonight, the mayor's comment about the I P M C for the rentals. Rentals been up for three years. First, I've heard that term. Or I have known seventeen years, we have been under the vocal. Second to that, the mayor tonight stated, um all the fire, trying to put something for the mayor. Is that something new, twenty twenty-two about the fire department standardization? Now it's a problem. Now we need to hire three people to have twenty-four seven access. Just do for call. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll close this portion of the meeting to the public. Any else with the settings and meetings? We have Parks and Recreation Board scheduled for Thursday, March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. Planning and zoning, Monday, April third, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Next regular agenda meeting is April sixth at six P M. Regular meeting of council, April eleventh at seven P M. Other committees now.
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Yeah, I would have never guessed that would mean.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock, April third.
Good. We shall The ordinance, seven P M, April third.
The two that we need to fix up, and then you're also going to do the parking.
Good. Any other committees?
Uh, community development, if you guys can. Can I, on the April thirteen? It's seven P M. Good for you. Yes, sir, it's a Thursday. Good for you. We're set.
Yeah, is the room's available?
Yes, a room is available.
Is there an agenda then for the community development?
Not sure at this point.
All right, one will come out then. I would say to
Yeah, I could probably put something together.
Thanks.
The other meetings. Hearing none.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mrs. Thompson for adjournment. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Bitner.
Aye.
Mr. Chaboo.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.